All right. Good evening, everyone, and it's time to call our regularly scheduled for meeting to order. Glad to see everyone. Um, hopefully you all received the topic of the agenda that was distributed by Jill earlier in the week. I will entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Your second.
Sorry.
I'm gonna say. By Doby and second advice to my greatest. It could have gone either way. I love when we're in sync. Any discussion? Okay, all of the favor let it be done by saying I. Any opposed? And motion carries. That will bring us to the minutes. Do have a copy of the June minutes distributed earlier this week and I'm hopeful that everyone had a chance to take a look at. I will entertain a motion for approval of the June minutes.
Uh, move that we approve the two minutes with the one correction that Kathy's already pointed out that. Treasury report needs to be changed to May expenditures.
Okay. There are six.
My second.
All right, so move by White, seconded by Brown, um, that we would approve the June minutes with the correction indicated. Any further discussion? Okay, so you know, all those in favor, let them know by saying I. Any opposed? Um, carries. That will take us to the treasury report. So Kathy, I'll turn the floor to you.
I move the board approve the June two thousand twenty four operating bill totally six thousand one hundred and eighty one dollars and nineteen cents.
Right. If then move by Brown, seconded by White, that we would approve expenditure than the amount of three hundred twenty six thousand one hundred eighty one dollars and nineteen cents. Any discussion? Okay, so you know, discussion? Kathy, did you have something? No? Okay, all those in favor, let it be done by saying I. Any opposed? And motion carries.
I'd move to receive and file the June two thousand twenty four financial report.
And it's been moved by Brown, seconded by Lutha Kuda, that we would approve or we were receiving filed a financial report. Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying I. Any opposed?
Okay, I have two things I'd state. Um, I sent a document to Plant Moran showing that the fidelity account was closed on April fourth, two thousand twenty four. Uh, this will be cast on to the auditors. This was after request. Also, I was able, finally able to deposit with the net fidelity interest of. We shot into Michigan class on Monday. In our Michigan class account, we earned twenty thousand four hundred forty two dollars and sixty two cents of interest in June. Our month and balance was four million six hundred thirty nine thousand forty five. Balance and forty first, and the daily yield on June thirty of course, five point four one six three percent.
Yeah, it's, um, anything else from the finance or the treasure report?
That's the treasure.
All right, thank you. We'll see you again later. Um, do we have anything from the friends? I know Stacy's out of town this week. Um, I have the book sale starts tomorrow.
Well, actually tonight, um, so a little different than what they do. Book sale starts tonight for the friends. They're doing friends only from six to six forty five and then six forty five to nine, it's open to the general public. And then it's going to be Friday and Saturday. Uh, and it's going to be in the quiet study room behind the browsing desks this time instead of in the browsing area. And uh, it's just, they're set up on cards. So it's a, you know, a little difference, kind of a pop-up sale, but um, other than that, I can't think of any, anything else.
Okay.
Oh, um, they will be serving again, the friends at, um, at stake.
Uh, nice. Okay, and maybe we can all try to get out there that if we're in town.
Friday night, eight forty five, seven eleven thirty or whatever time.
That's still under. All right, um, good news on the sale. Uh, my mom is downstairs and she was asking me about the book sale. She lives in North Carolina and she's interested in our book sales. And I was like, oh, it starts tomorrow. And she says, like, we gotta come back tomorrow, but maybe she can shop tonight.
I'll leave it one down and tell you about.
You can wait some of that. All right, um, so thank you, um, for that Jill and Maria. That will bring us to the director's report. And we are fortunate to have Jill Baker with us. I think this is our first time that we've had you sitting in, um, at Spot, Helen, of course, and we've done that. The welcome.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so I'm filling in for Kelly while she is in Scotland. Um. It's, um, I'm sorry, I forgot to include the director's report in the printed board packet for you all, um, but I can give you a copy before you leave tonight if you like. Um, so the major things on the uh, director's report uh, were that we're having the end of summer reading program party. On Monday, July twenty ninth, it's gonna appear at the twelve mile location. Ria can probably tell you more about that because it's. For Crystal Saxon have planned it. It's gonna be a big. So we'll have Cameron Zavara again doing the magic show. They'll do two shows. We'll have the big blue box outside. Um, Oakland County's coming with two inflatable things. Um, everybody gets ice cream.
Everybody, even the adults. Okay, I was making sure. And that's like, I, if they decide whether or not I come, right?
It will be an ice cream sandwich. We will have, you know, popsicles for the kids who can't have. Who have an allergy. They can't just get a popsicle though, because they don't want the ice cream sandwich. You have to have an allergy and we believe you that.
Good.
Yes, and then, um, we are also having the uh, teen summer reading end of party. And that's going to be on Friday, August second. It's going to be after hours here at, um, the, uh, this location. They're gonna have pizza, scavenger hunt. Um, it's gonna be really fun. Uh, Rebecca and Jenny are gonna be hosting it. The, we got one patron comment. It was just complimenting her who does our, um, tech one-on-ones. Um, and then Food Truck Tuesdays, our next one's gonna be July sixteenth. It's the Detroit barbecue food truck. Um, so we encourage you to come on up to that if you want. And we also encourage you to come to the summer reading finale on Monday, the twenty ninth. Um, we're gonna be doing our next FCL Town Hall Wednesday, August twenty first at six thirty. This one's gonna be at downtown Farmington. Uh, the presentation's gonna be recorded and we're gonna be providing information on, um, the library's millage. Um, the audit work is gonna begin on August twenty sixth. Um, some members of the board will also be required to fill out paperwork, so watch out for these requests. Um, you may have noticed if you parked anywhere in the back, um, we have a little raised garden bed back there now. So in June, we were approached by the leader of the local Girl Scout group, um, who wanted to know if we would partner with them to do, uh, Michigan. Well, uh, native plant pollinator garden here at twelve mile. So Peter and I have been working with them on that. They were supposed to plant the flowers yesterday, but got rained out, so they're gonna come back next week to do that. So the Girl Scouts provided the, uh, soil and the flowers. We provided the raised garden bed and the spot. And, um, we'll be watering it and that kind of thing. And then I'm gonna be working with friends to install some educational signage about it. Um, also wanted to announce that unfortunately Sandra Bullock will not be at the library tomorrow. Uh-huh, we confirmed with their publicist that she is not scheduled to be here. This was not a library event. It was a private room rental that was scheduled by somebody to be meet and greet. Um, that event has been canceled. Um, and the library staff will be walking in the Founder's Festival Parade on. July twentieth.
It's a twenty, yeah.
I'll amend that note. Um, the theme is through the decades and we're doing a fifties theme. Uh, Ms. Maria is in charge of our participation. And we chose the fifties because that's when we became a district library. We, we were the first district library in Michigan. Uh, the parade starts at ten and, uh, generally participants are in place by nine. Um, so if you'd like to join us, you're welcome to just wear your FCL swag, your T-shirt.
Dressing like a baby.
Oh, one to come. Or dress.
And or.
And or that's what you put on, a little scarf on or put your hair in a little thing. Yeah, that is such a right. So, um, yeah, so you're also participating in the parade too.
And I'm gonna tell you the book like they do.
Oh, yes, book bike will be there too.
Because Becky did it. So you know how good it's going.
Oh, yes, Becky, oh, this is really good job.
I think I might actually be in town for, uh, I would say this year, which is the first, I've never actually attended Founders Day. I've never actually been here when it's, when it happens. So I think I'm in town this year. Um, so. And to be there, I'll figure out what my bits of gear looks like.
Do you know yet where they're going to meet? You have to meet. You need to meet on Grand River by power. You have to look for our spot.
I'm sure we'll see.
You don't know the number till like two days before.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, it's always on Grand River. It starts after power. It's hard to miss a book like.
Look for the book by. Anything else, Charles?
No, that's all.
Um, um, did you guys have a date for, or does this, does this, this twelve miles left to close one day for water meter?
Yeah, uh, Peter could probably speak to that. I think we're thinking the fifteenth.
Uh, yes, we had three dates cho- uh, chosen, um. After looking was, well, I think one was the fifteenth and then a week later and then a week later from that date. We haven't specifically chosen a date yet. Uh, we did just block it off in Library Market for events, so that way no one is, uh, okay, setting up stuff.
Okay. That's August fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, so still plenty of time to give notice, uh, whenever we land on the date. All right, thank you, Jill. Appreciate that. Um, and I think that will take us to, uh, Peter. And I think you have an update for us on the roofing replacement fitting project.
Uh, yes, so, um, Kelly and I have been talking with our, uh, the architect who's doing, um, the master plan and all that. And we think it, it's a better route to go because right now. If we just went out and put out a bid, we're kind of just having people come in to say, oh, this is what I think, this is what I think, and we're comparing apples to oranges. So we're gonna have the architect company, uh, come out and they're gonna do an all-inclusive, uh, package. They're from start to finish. They review the roofing report from Royal Roofing. They'll send someone out to inspect the roof to gather their own, you know, information. They'll put that all into a, uh, new report, set up a bid for it. And, um, show it to Kelly and I so we can review it, approve it. And then, uh, they will then take that, post the bid, uh, gather some, some people who bid for it. Take their. They'll show us all of them, but they'll give us notes on who they think will be like the best fit. Uh, and again, we review it. We'll, we'll be the ones who actually approve who we're gonna go with. Um, after that, MDC will work with the, the chosen company. They'll walk them through the project. They'll handle everything from start to finish and, um. Once everything's completed, they will review the final work and, uh, provide us updated report.
And I think if I recall correctly, our previous discussion on this was around, um, they kind of establishing. The criteria around what type of materials we wanted to use in the future, uh, new technologies. Um, but as we got into that conversation, it seemed to be more advantageous for us to define what it is we're looking for through the bid process. Versus having a bunch of apples or oranges bids that are not really comparable.
I, I think it makes a lot of sense to use them. Um, I do have a question though. They do that. They've been doing the master plan, right?
Yeah.
Um, so have they coordinated their charges or are they, are they master plan the same fees as the other? Is this a big bulk of work that they're getting from the library? In terms of how they, how they set up the plan pricing?
So this is, um, essentially just a completely separate thing from the master plan. Um. They, I, I think it's like another department essentially that will come in and do it. Uh, and they priced us out at thirteen thousand eight hundred to do that whole all-inclusive thing to, um, set up the bid, post the bid. Review the potential bidders, choose one, all that up until the very end.
What I will say, Sharon, is that I know in our interaction with, uh, MCD so far. You know, Kelly's work with Steve, that Steve usually kind of acknowledges. The layers of work that maybe have done that would feed into this to adjust appropriately. Um, and so Kelly's really familiar with what they have done so far compared to what new work would need to be done. So I trust that she's probably keeping, uh, a good eye to that. Because I know where you're going. You don't want to be paid for due for the two or others. Okay. Um, so Peter, um, I think you're looking for, um. An action from us tonight on this. Are you looking for us to review it and visit it next month? Need it.
Because it's under the fifteen.
That's true.
Yeah, so I don't think, um, for Kelly's, I think that, um, a boat was needed. It was just. More so you're there, you're aware.
And if there's any questions, uh, we can fill it. I will also note that we, um. With this whole, uh, the process that we're gonna go with. Doing the whole roof, not like the whole roof, but like all, all sections that need to be redone. As a whole, instead of just doing, you know, one section now, wait like a few months to a year, do another section, because then we'll start. Degrading more than other.
Right, and most everything was pretty near.
Mm-hmm.
Are they doing both buildings?
Uh, we're just doing this building for now, um, because of all the plan, potential plans we don't know for.
And this would be something that we would want done pretty quickly.
Yes.
Because we don't want to go into the winter.
Yeah, yeah, because, uh, well, last winter we had, um, over in the browsing section, there was quite a few weeks.
Bring your bucket. Experienced some of those yesterday.
Any other questions for Peter? Right, thank you very much, Peter.
I have one other question. What was the status of the lights? Changing the lights?
Uh, like changing the lights LED?
Yes, what's the status of that?
Um. I, I thought we were kind of on a standstill for that week. Um. I do have.
So, so I asked.
Yeah, um, I'm not really sure, uh, exactly how we're gonna proceed with that. I know I was talking to Jill that we need to talk with Kelly for a potential plan. Um. I think part of it was waiting to see where the finalized plan for the branch was gonna be, um, and for here. To make sure that we're not gonna take out any lights or redo any lights that are gonna get taken out kind of thing.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Great, thank you very much, Peter. Um, that will bring us to unfinished business. Um, and we have the matter of the facilities committee. Um, so as I think everybody knows, uh, most of us knows. Um, we kind of slimmed ourselves down to a lean operating structure with only necessary committees. And really the only committees that function are finance and, uh, personnel. Um, mainly because we like to keep everything at the table with the full body discussing. But with the work going on, um, related to the master plan, uh, maybe the projects that Peter talked to us about. Um, and other random things that happen, like people wanting to donate things to the physical property and all of that. Um, we've decided that this would be a good time maybe to reconstitute the facilities committee. Um, so let me, I, I don't know that we, we. Jim, do you know if, if action was taken to actually, uh? Well, to eliminate the facilities committee, I think it's like this.
Uh, it's no, no, action was never taken to do that. No.
All right.
Um, right, it's a.
So it is a committee that's standing is just not active and is not people at this point. All right. I think tonight we might be looking for some nominations for the committee, right?
Can I ask, um, is there a bylaw about how many committees any one? Board member can be on?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. I don't think we have that limitation, um, but do.
Think of a cast, we went to two committees.
Uh, is that in the bylaws though?
Not sure.
It would, it, it was definitely a practice, if not a bylaw, that we tried to spread things out. Um.
It's a good practice.
We did have more committees. Um. Uh, I, yeah, I mean, um, I mean, we could have a motion, but like, should we, should we, uh? Like before motion or after the motion, we'd say what, what is expected of the facilities committee, like, like? How many people should we have and who, and, and when will it be for that kind of thing?
Hmm.
We also wanted me to note when this came up that, um. Peter, Maria, myself, Kelly and you. Should be mandatory members of the committee because with the master plan coming up. Obviously Peter would need to be part of it as the facilities manager, Maria and I, because we have knowledge of both of these locations. Kelly, because she is the director and you, because you're the president.
Oh, I, I'm, I'm absolutely in favor of a, of a committee or whatever, but that was one of the problems is when we started that. Require that people are on the committee and then there was never a time when that committee could be, you know, like, like people, yeah. Yeah, so that's when you say that they're required. I understand what you're saying, but that was the, makes it hard.
The facilities committee always had to check with all, um, the people who were involved.
Yes.
So definitely would work with them.
That's one thing to re. Have a rule about who's on the committee. It's another thing to say the committee can't meet less every single person that's there.
Right, and that's. That wasn't, that, that sounded crazy, but it was, but it was, if you're gonna be on facilities, when you do, like. Are you supposed to be there? Are you supposed to give input? Right, everything comes back to the board still, but, um. Yeah, that, that just, it just, that was one of the struggles with having a facilities.
And I don't know what it would do.
Well, and that's, and, and so to Jim's point around like, what is it defined to do? Maybe Kelly and I should do a little bit more work on that for the group, um, to, to give that a little bit more definition. Um, but in my mind, as we're entering into these physical plan activities, there are some things around, um, defining. It's like the style guide for our facility, basically like what, what will it look and feel like, you know, what type of furniture will we have? What, what, you know, there, there will be a lot of decisions that need to be made, infrastructure wise, so.
And that was the reason, what, Renee can speak to this too, but, um, like when I was participating. Uh, you know, it was the difference between having a board be the committee of the whole, you know, to look at every facility decision. Like picking out benches for the outside or something, you know, and, um, I don't know, I'm not even sure who was in the room when Donald started talking about this before Peter got here. Um, but those kinds of decisions sometimes went through the committee and then to narrow things down before it got to the board. So it wasn't an entire board having a discussion, I mean, all of that.
Things like the sign in the front.
Yeah.
That's a, a good project for the facilities committee.
Right. And it's not that the board members don't have a decision, but it's, I say, but it's, it's kind of like what happened with personnel or, or, or finance that, uh, the deeper dive is done by the committee and then, and then. And then the board gets to hear what that committee, you know, recommends based on. Your actual work.
I think the sign is probably a good example of having assigned issue and discussion with a smaller group. And then bringing kind of a, here are just choices to the whole, um, to the whole board. Uh, that's a good example of a facility that didn't need everybody the first round. It just need a couple of people to hone it down a little bit.
Agreed.
And I've heard you've said this about personnel, that it can't be more than like three. Board members present at the meeting.
Correct.
And this, I'm assuming the same applies.
Same here.
Well, that's the reason, uh, if we have, if we have a full board, you could have, you could potentially have four. Four members of the board on a committee if you wanted to, but the reason why you can't now is because a quorum of the fire board right now is four members. And a quorum can't meet. Uh. Without being an open meeting, yeah.
But as a president, uh, you've, you've kind of run out every board, so I'm not sure if you count as a member of the committee.
Well, this is, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm an ex officio, but that's the thing, if, if four of us happen to show up anywhere, that is where we're running into problems. So usually, and I know on this one, Kelly and I did talk about it, because, you know, she wants to make sure that I'm able to actively participate. Um, and so I think we'll just need to coordinate that really closely. Um, and I think we do need a bit of the question around, uh. How many committees is each person on? Because again, like. You know, I don't want you to be on four committees and be overburdened and then I'm over here on no committees, right? And this kind of state by, so. There's a lot of work to spread around, so I think that's an important consideration to look at, so.
And it gives everybody a chance to participate or more people to participate.
Right, yeah. So, uh, I can take this back with Kelly when she gets back and, um, put a little more definition around the committee itself. And I think that's a good question, like what are we really looking for the committee to do?
And, and maybe, you know, back to your point about did we ever disband? The reason why, one reason we didn't disband is because the committee, it didn't necessarily mean on a, on a regular basis. Like you, maybe we need a facilities committee to look at specific projects, but maybe we don't always need a facilities committee.
And that's how I envisioned it, like it really would not be a standing committee where it means starting regular cadence. Other than what is required based on the products that we have going on, whether that be the roof replaced, or whether that be the master plan activities, you know. But serious infrastructure, uh, types of, um, activities. So we can put some definition around that and, um, socialize that with you guys before the next meeting. And maybe even figure out if we might be interested in doing that.
Do we have any members right now who aren't?
I want no committees, that's a lot to this.
And that's, I'm, um, wondering. I'm not on any.
I am, this, this I have to.
We are too. Too far lying on two, but I'd still like to be on.
Oh, we, oh, Sharon's on none.
Okay, so Sharon's on none. And so, all right, so we have, and see, there we go. We have plenty of votes, um, for that committee. All right, thank you all very much. That will bring us to subcommittee updates. Uh, Kathy, I will turn it back to you for the finance committee.
Since April, we have accumulated sixty one thousand five hundred eighty six dollars and twelve cents. In interest with Michigan. I think that's brilliant. So I spoke with Philly Schimoller from Plant Moran about transferring more monies into Michigan class to earn a better interest rate. From the FCL, uh, Millage Money Market account, she suggested we could transfer two million eight hundred thousand from the capital fund. And one million two hundred thousand from the general fund totaling four million. I can easily transfer monies back and forth into the Millage Money Market, the FCL Millage Money Market account when we need it. So I'd like to make a motion with the board to approve the transfer of. Two million eight hundred thousand from the capital fund and one million two hundred thousand from the general fund into our Michigan class. FCL Millage sub account.
Hey, it's been moved by Brown, seconded by Murphy, that we would transfer two point eight million dollars from our capital millage fund. And one point two million from the general to the Michigan class account. Any discussion?
Um, I have a point. Um, Kathy, how, when you transfer the money, I'm thinking we have these issues in the newspaper about nonprofits is. Are, are, are you? Is, are, are, are you authorized yourself to do it or do you need two signatures to do it?
No, I'm authorized myself.
So.
But Kelly is also authorized.
To do it. So one person on that signature can move back and forth between two accounts. But you can't go to your vacation home.
Wish I had one.
Well, the, the reason I asked that is because we've seen issues recently where, you know, some of the nonprofits have had some funding problems, so. And, and I don't want you to ever be in a position where you were questioned. So as long as you're just going between accounts.
Yes.
You know, um, because I was just concerned now about your safety.
So Kathy, you said earlier that the, um, Michigan class is paying just over five percent interest. What's our ma- money market? That doesn't seem very, I mean, I'm happy to approve the transfer, but it doesn't seem very competitive for what money markets are paying right now.
And I would agree with you.
Mine pays. It's paying five point seven five.
I would, I would say, and I know you've had a conversation with America, but I would ask them again, are we in the most competitive prob- uh, product that they offer?
Cause even with transferring this money, leaving that money there at just two percent. Either that's it, that's it, but money markets are paying pretty well right now. In overall, in general. So anyway, but I'm happy to approve this transfer. I, it's, I'm not saying this to interrupt the motion.
But your thoughts about, you know, we're really still under earning on what's left and there's quite a bit that's still left there. Um, I think I went to, uh, Westland Library within the last week and, you know, they have a building project out there, uh, basically for the last few years. And one of the things they stated was that, you know, they were able to build um, due to prudent financial savings, right, um, through the pandemic, et cetera. So similar sort of what we have. But it's kind of like the more we can earn on that money while we can, um, we should be trying to do that. So maybe Kathy will check that with America, see if there's any more competitive product. And if not, there might need to be a different conversation with Plant Moran, some other.
There's, um, uh, Comerica been affected by the Ameriprise, um, consolidation and their accounts at Comerica, or is that a different entity?
I do.
You haven't heard anything from Ameriprise?
Heard about that, but I don't know what, if Comerica.
It might only be, uh, individual banking. It may not be, we're shocked, you know, yeah.
Any further discussion? Seeing that, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Anything else from the finance committee? Okay, thank you. All right, that will take us to the personnel committee. Uh, personnel committee is transitioning over to your leadership. When you're gonna have your first personnel committee meeting?
We don't have, since we all get together, the committee is, when he has something to discuss, I don't think anything is.
All right, um, you do have one item to discuss, uh, and it's a bit behind, probably due to my fault. Uh, for not bringing it to our attention, but we need to address our directors' evaluations. Um, and so, um, maybe you and I can, I'll be about that in the coming week. Trying to get that process underway.
Is there a timeline?
I would say we want to have it ready by next meeting. Cause what we like to do is basically take our action in conjunction with the timing of the staff, um, appraisals, and I think that happened in, right now, maybe.
They were due, didn't you?
Okay, so you are a little bit behind as well. So we're, we sound like we're, we're in the right, we're still in the right timeframe. But yes, you try to coordinate and make sure that, um, that the direct evaluation coincides with the other evaluation going on in the library.
Conversation about revising the evaluation.
I think that would be the first thing I would look at, you know, as the new chair of the committee. The members of the committee have been through that process with that particular form a couple of times, I think, so they might have some input and feedback on it. Um, you may have a different idea. And I also think Kelly, as a person who's been, um, evaluated, may have some input. And I think it's always good to get input from the person being evaluated. So when she's back, um, I think we can have a discussion around that. Yeah, we'll be here Monday night, yeah. So, but, but I think that's how I would approach this, get those inputs and then see if you need to make a change with the form itself.
And if you wanted to, um, to hurry, you could send an email and some possible dates that we.
Did somebody send me the evaluation form?
Yes.
Send it to all of us.
Yes.
It's been a year.
Can we jump back to the finance committee? Well, because we've lost Bob as a board member, he was the other person that's on the committee between you and me.
Okay, well, that's why I wanted to ask, cause I, yeah, when you said me, I, I don't know who's on the committees anymore. And I was thinking at the very least, if it's an update, it's Roger. Committee members.
And maybe we can have Chris send that with kind of the commentary around the, you know, facilities committee. Just so everybody knows where we stand right now, committees and who's serving where. Uh, cause to Kathy's point, yeah, we would need somebody else on. Anything else, Kathy? Right, thank you. All right, anything else from personnel? All right, thank you. That will take us to new business. Any new business?
It's old business, I guess, but, um, what is the process for replacing our, our?
Well, um, the city of Farmington, um, I'm sure will do what they have done in years past, which is conduct a very, um, publicized, um, notification of opening and interviews and all of that. Um, they're usually open to the public and, uh, some of the people who go through that process might want us to. I live in the hills, so.
Do either of you wanna?
About the process, like what it looks like? Yeah, I think it's, they make it public or, you know, they share it of where. Most of us, a couple of other physicians that are available on other, um, committees. And then, yeah, they have interviews that you. Yeah, you apply and you get called for an interview that's with city council and.
It's an open interview.
Yeah. Oh, so do the group. So this is an interesting, about Farmington, they do it differently from the hills and, and, and it's, I like it, but it's going to leave us without a board member. It's gonna leave us with a vacancy for at least a few months.
And we really need.
Well, yeah, I mean, seven is better than what we had, but, um, but because they go through these, they'll do the, you know, they'll collect people who are interested and they'll, and they'll, they will interview in a, during a an open meeting, um. So it's gonna take them, yeah, I mean, that, I, they, it'll take, I would say until September at the earliest.
Have they posted it yet?
Yeah, and I don't even know that. And I don't know when Bob told them, I don't know when Bob told them that he had made his decision.
I believe they were officially like notified today.
Yeah, and so that's, so we're already late because it's term, yeah, so, you know, that I understand, but, um, but yeah, well, this will be without a board member for Farmington.
So my question is, do we need to take some initiative to remind the, to, to get started?
Oh.
See, do we need to say, yes, please get the process started because the position is. They already are aware of that?
Yeah, and, uh, you know, I guess, um, I saw Mayor Lewis a week or so ago. I mean, so we all knew Bob's term was ending. Him kind of decided what he wanted to do. And then I did copy, um, Mayor Lewis on my note today, uh, so he knows for sure, for sure. That Bob decided, uh, to leave us.
So two months from now, they won't say, oh, we didn't know who then started.
They will, they're actually very on top of that.
It's just a long process. It's not that, it's not that it's, that they delay.
But they, it just takes.
Appreciate that. All right, um, any other new business? Seeing none, that will take us to correspondence. Any correspondence?
No.
And then that will bring us to public comment, if you have any public comment.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Latham. I've attended a couple of meetings in the past. Um, first thing, your, the staff, I'm mostly here, so the staff is amazing. One thing that none of them can figure out is why I get notices when my, uh, hotspot is due to be returned. I get all my notices that, um, you know, the library events. But I, when I'm on hold for a hotspot, I never get notified. I have to call to find out why, you know, if there's one available. And it doesn't make any sense to me, you know? Um, and Megan has looked into it, um, a couple of other people, I don't know all their names, but um, they've all, you know, looked into it. And so I've given them us, they thought it was because my, I've got an AOL account through AT&amp;T. And so I gave them a second email address. I'm, um, secretary for a nonprofit which is a Gmail account. I don't get those and don't get it through Gmail either. So we can't figure, you know, nobody can figure it out.
But you can place it on hold.
I can place it, I usually place it on hold when I turn mine in.
Okay.
And, you know, and then I was number nineteen last night in the hold, so it's gonna be a few days, but yeah, um.
But then you don't get the notification.
I don't get the notification that my hold is available.
Do you get your book ones? If you put a book on hold, do you get that notification?
No. So I don't often, I don't often put a book on hold, but, you know, I u- usually am able to, to take it right out, but.
Did you check to make sure they have the correct email address?
Yes, they've got both. Yeah, I'm getting the other notices. I just don't get notification that my hold is available. So they, they have to answer my phone calls. But, uh, they're very gracious about it, but I, you know, I would just like not to be able to have to go through that every time, cause sometimes it's three, four phone calls.
Uh, Jill, do you think maybe, um, guys could investigate this a little bit and, um, perhaps one day, um, the Miss Latham in the building with her device, maybe do some testing or such.
Yeah, cause it's not going into spam either. I, I look at spam every day.
Take your information, um, put it in a help desk with, uh, our vendor and have it, them look at it on their end. Could also look into setting up a text message notification if that might be an alternative and we can test that out. That works. Um, but before, once the board meeting is over, um, we'll talk, I'll get your contact information. I'll follow up with you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
We'll, we'll work it out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I, I mean, they're busy enough for the most part. The staff is, you know, and they're, they're always so helpful. But they, most of them know me by name. I, I don't even have to, you know, they just bring me up on the computer. Oh, there's still four people or there's still six people ahead of you and stuff. The other thing is, I'm, I don't know how pleased you are with the people that are doing the cleaning. Because I'm not. Um, I have been in till ten minutes to, to nine at night and then back in the next morning. And the paper towel dispenser has needed batteries and nothing was done about it. But you could, still couldn't get paper towel out of it. Um, there, there's been two or three times when I've gone into the, the lab area and they haven't, there's papers on the floor from the previous night. So I, I just, I, I, I just don't feel that, that they're doing their job properly.
Well, it's interesting that you, um, bring that up. You know, I am a pretty persnickety customer. I'm that guy. Um, wherever I go, anywhere I go, I'm observing everything about the situation. Um, and I know I've heard even from trustees here at the table about this very issue. Um, I was here, uh, maybe a week or so ago, um, and I ran into what I would consider, um, but the question I had was more about the frequency of the maintenance. And so that's something I do have, um, on my list of things to talk with Kelly, uh, Peter about when she's back. Just so that we can understand, um, is the frequency enough? Because to my sensibilities, I tend to agree with you. Um, and I've heard that from other board members also.
If I could speak to this matter.
Yeah.
So the company that we currently contract with is called McCoy. Um, they've been with us for a while now. Um, we are also not a hundred percent satisfied with their work. Um, Peter Witsnovich, uh, at the end of the table here, he is our facilities manager. Um, Peter just started in his position November twenty twenty-four. When he came in, this is one of the first things that Peter and I discussed was the uh, the cleaning here at the building and it not being up to standard. Um, this has been something that's been a concern for a while now. Um, and in my position as assistant director here at the building, it's definitely been a concern of mine for a while. We have met with McCoy on several occasions, um, talked with the manager and the owner. Um, we have a log of, um, what we feel are things that they have not been doing cleaning wise that have been to our standards of what they're required to do in the contract. We've done walkthroughs with them. Um, so we are currently in the process of um, working with them to remedy these things. And we're kind of at the point now where if it can't be remedied, we may be looking for a new cleaning service because it has gotten to that point. I can say that they've had to replace several staff members because of the concerns that we have raised. Um, so just so you're aware, this is well on our radar. It is something that.
I know I talked to you about it because I came and got her one time. She was at the desk and I and this is, this was here last night when I was here.
Yeah, I mean, they have, we have a cleaning crew that comes in in the evenings, um, and then a day porter that comes in during the day and cleans. Um, we also have, uh, facility staff of our own, but they're mainly, it's more building maintenance, not so much custodial. So, um, that is something that Peter and I are going to be discussing and it may result in us just going with another company because we have not been.
Thank you. Uh, Jill or Peter, do you know, uh, are we contractually on with McCoy for what period of time? Or are we beyond that period, uh, with them? Cause we, they have been in play a long time.
Um, I'd have to look into that. I'm not sure what, where we're at.
I'd be curious to know that.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, I'd have to look. Uh, I feel like a lot of cleaning contracts, though, there's no required time. You just have to give them like a certain notice.
Yeah, and, uh, I, this one, I, I'll be honest with you. Thought we had discussed getting, changing from McCoy at some point in my, in my couldn't be faulty brain here. It seems that I remember that we had a conversation and we were switching from them already at some point. So I would really ask that we, uh, follow up on this one, uh, because, uh, it's pretty important.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here and we appreciate you coming and come back anytime.
Well, I, I just about live here, cause I don't want to be home between three and seven when the electric rates are higher. And I live alone and my place is usually on the dark side, so, cause I don't have windows on this, this, uh, west. Oh, I've got windows in the north, a little one and in the south, so.
But please sit around so I can meet your evaluation.
I will, I will do that.
Thank you guys for your, uh, contribution there as well. That will take us to trustee comment. Any comments from trustees? Okay, I think I saw Christine's, uh, hand first.
Uh, two things, uh, uh, this kind of came up once before. But wasn't, not for a point of discussion. And I'm not sure the whole board needs to discuss it, or I just need help. But I can't figure out how to use our system, get a book from a different library. So I just always give up and go on the Redford Township, um, uh, website and get my books. And, uh, I, I, and I, I think I was told that there's a way to do it, but it's not intuitive. I can't figure out how to do it. So like I can put a book on hold here and I, I'll. So like I can put a book on hold here and I'll be told it's like, I'm number like ninety-seven on hold. I go to Redford Township, I have it the next day. So. I just want to figure out how to do that. Or if this is, and I know we had this special about multi libraries and what fees are paid and who gets control. So maybe we're just not doing that, but, um, who do I talk to to figure this out?
So I, I can answer that question simply for you. So the easiest way to do that is to go to mel.org and put in a request. It's gonna be coming through at your library loan. It may take up to two weeks to arrive here. If you want it the next day from another library and you have a card at Redford, that's probably the easiest way to do it.
This card works at Redford. This card works at Brighton. This card works in Royal Oak. It works at all the libraries.
It's because we're not part of, we don't have a shared catalog with other libraries. We have a standalone catalog. Which is why you can't directly request it. You can request, I just brought their libraries, but you have to do it through interlibrary loan. Which we use the Mel library system. So there is a way you can do that through our website. But if you're just looking for the simplest way, you just go to mel.org, request it through there, it gets sent through the mail. Doesn't come. Well, it comes through T L N delivery, but it can take up to two weeks to arrive here. But, um, you know, if you choose your pickup location as Redford, because they do use a catalog. Like shared catalog, a shared catalog and they're on the direct delivery and you can get it faster than that's. What you just have to do.
All right, but with mel.org, if it's a new book, you won't get it for six months.
Yeah, that's true.
Right, so if it's a brand new book, they're not gonna let you do it through mail.
As long as I just understand how it works because I'm perfectly happy to just go to Brighton or Royal Oak or Redford. I mean.
Well, I think it's a, it's a valid question because I think, uh, when Kelly and I went to the Koha. Somebody asked a similar question around like, how do you do it? And people are always comparing experiences as well, right? So Jill, from my perspective and others at the table, I know Jill probably knows exactly how all of this works, like, but I. But I, but like, I really don't necessarily, and I'm thinking like, maybe it'd be good. You know, help educate the board if we could maybe see a comparison of the two approaches. If you all could talk to us about the libraries who have shared catalogs, the libraries who don't. And, and have some understanding around the drivers behind those decisions.
Well, there's another question that come up in what you guys, what you said, like, if, if it's a new book. Yeah, what kinds of books are you trying to get? Because I go to, I go to interlibrary loan all the time, but I'm looking for books that nobody else is looking for. But if you're, but if you're trying, but the difference is, um, like West, people have said, people have come here and Maria and Jill can explain this better. But people come here and said, oh, I can get a book at West Bloomfield. But the reason was like, cause that was explained to you guys, explained it to me years ago that. Yeah, because West Bloomfield sometimes makes a decision to buy more copies of a new book upfront. So that, um, a lot, you know, so that there are more books available at first than we are able to do all the time. But then also they're left with a whole bunch of extra copies, you know, shortly after that big popularity drops. So the reason why you can't get it, I think you probably understand the reason why you can't get it through interlibrary loan for the first six months. If it's a new book is because no library wants to ship off their new books too. Um, so like even, I'm not sure you could always go and get a brand new book at Brighton just by using your farming card. Um, you know, there are limits on, on what other libraries will do if you don't have a card in their library.
So that's, so just off the subject of a new book or a six month old book or a two year old book, I just wanted to understand the difference.
Well, but it, but it, it's a, but it's part of the education that boards have because they're like, like to make sure that you are able to get a book. And they're not ninety-seven in line. Staff would have to make different purchasing decisions. And that's where you guys should explain it better.
And to that thing, um, so that we are not buying all these copies upfront, we're doing a rental.
Yeah, so last year we started a subscription with a company called McNauton. So in the past, we would purchase multiple copies of a book from, uh, our vendor Baker and Taylor. So say the latest James Patterson came out and there were a hundred people on the holds list. Our holds to, um. Copy ratio, uh, I believe is four now. Does that sound right, Maria?
Four or five.
Four or five. So, um, you know, we would. End up buying multiple copies and then when it wasn't popular anymore, we'd have, you know, tons of copies left over. That, that we would just mark withdrawn and then send off to be resolved. With McNauton, once they are, we buy them for a fraction of price, but we rent them for a fraction of the price. And then once they're no longer popular, we send them back to the company. Um, McNauton has allowed us to get more copies, popular books to reduce the wait time for people. So you should no longer be experiencing the level of wait times that you experienced maybe. The, in the last few years. Now, we're a public library, we're not a bookstore. There's always gonna be a wait. It's never gonna be on demand, like, you know, purchasing something on Amazon. We do have your lucky day for that reason, which is popular books that you can't put on hold, that they come in, it's your lucky day. We've been purchasing more books through McNauton that are available as your lucky day where you can't put hold. So there are more that are available just as you walk in. So it is something that we're watching very closely because we do want people to have a good experience for when they come in, that the book that they want is available. And that they're shorter wait times. Um, but you know, at the end of the day. Demand is demand and we're not always gonna be able to have somebody put on a book on hold that's really popular and then the next day always get it. When you have a big, large shared system like T L N where it's now, I think they're up to like seventy-three libraries. Southeast Michigan, all sharing their combined books, which I was part, um, I worked at Salem South Line, which was part of the T L N shared system. And even then, anything that was new, they wouldn't share. So if something was taken off new, then they would share it. So you could get like kind of new stuff fast. But you're still not gonna get the high demand things. So it's give and take. You know, you don't have control over your catalog that way because you're sharing it with seventy-two other libraries. Um, it made adding things, unique items like library of things. When we added, um, when I was at Salem South Line, we added these DIY kits. It was a nightmare trying to get those added. Because we had to send them to T L N for original cataloging. Um, you know, we had to jump on other people's records to get stuff cataloged. Sometimes it was incorrect. There were a lot of issues. I mean, with, like with anything, there's pros and cons. Um. I can't say one is absolutely better than the other. It's just, this is what we have. And we also have a lot of money invested in our current system, which Kathy Brown can speak to because she administered it for. Um, twenty years. Um, so I think that our catalog does offer a lot of really cool things. That you're not gonna find in the T L N catalog too, like Synetics Unbound, which provides. Book recommendations, read likes, you can look up one title, it'll show you what's available in every single format. You're not gonna get that in the T L N. So I think the benefits that our catalog provides over T L N. Outweighs the ability to get stuff from other libraries personally. But that's just my take.
I would agree.
Let me ask a question, um. Cause we're really talking about, you know. A, for instance, right, in, in, you know, our anecdotal experiences.
Yeah.
In this conversation. Um, how do we as an organization systematically understand if we are meeting the patron? Needs from, from a catalog, variety, quantity, timeliness perspective? How do we match that for? We get that data.
Well, I mean. You could look at circulation numbers. I mean, we don't have like a, a patron satisfaction for a break.
Well, one, like, like, could, is it possible, and it's, I know, the first, my first side, you get complaints, but, um, but. On the positive side, do we know how, what's an average hold look like? What's an average hold?
Because I, I will tell you, y'all know I'm checking all the time. Um, and I don't say anything a lot of times, but I'm always checking. Um, and, um, I, I do check and I'm curious sometimes, you know, and I check, I check around, you know? But I'm wondering, what is the staff's process look like to try to take that same assessment, that same landscape survey? Of how are we performing in the context of our peers? That's what it looks like to me. And I think that'd be a great activity for us to look into as we move into this fiscal year to figure out. How we capture that in a systematic way. I'd like to be getting patron feedback, not just anecdotally like this. But in a data-driven way that's trended so that we can understand if we're going up, down, sideways, back or forward.
And, and, and you're talking about, you know, yeah, big pitch, but like Chris said, this is why I didn't want to drop your issue. Because you brought up a very specific thing and, and, um, but I don't want, I wouldn't want people to say, well, I, I can get it from Redford. I can go to Levon here. You know, I mean, I do that too when I need to. Yes, you can. Yes, you can. Can I do it? Uh, 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 but I, but I, um. But I don't want everybody doing that if there's a, if there's a way we can serve people here and, and often. But the, that's why I've had this conversation with staff before about the, you know, and I think it would be good if we're all educated on what this means. If people, that's a specific issue, but, but it's an, it's a, it's a common issue. If I can't get the, the, my hold item. And I need to go someplace else. Yeah, how are we, you know, that's why I said, do we know an average time that, that a person waits on a hold? Um, and it seemed like we could figure that out too from our.
Yeah, definitely.
Unlike Marlon, I always get my notification that my, you know, my book is now available.
Yeah.
Usually after I've read it.
Well, right. And, and if people are doing that, you know, and, and again, what are the items that like, like, um. I've known certain teachers that are, you know, there, there are things that get put on hold all the time for, for. For what you're teaching during the school year. So, so that's different from, from adults who are looking for the latest. Uh, in the series that they're trying to read or whatever, or the latest by their favorite author. So, but I'm just curious about, yeah, are we, um. Just what are these asking too? It's like, how do we know when we're meeting those?
So I think we could work on that together as we go into the, the next fiscal year to really understand how we can do that and, and understand.
So that was a longer trustee comment that I.
I think that's a, that's a central something. And, and with the board changing, we haven't had a conversation about like this in a, in a while.
You know, it, it speaks to patron satisfaction.
Right.
And the bottom line is, that's what, what downs you can a patron get what they need when they need it.
Right.
Um, or in a reasonable tie of parents to, to our peers, right?
Or know how to navigate the mail system, like.
Yeah, I didn't even know what it's.
Yeah.
I didn't want to get.
Can I ask a question? Did you ever ask help to the reference desk? Cause if you did, we would have told you. Ask the people who are working at the desk, he wouldn't know.
Right.
And then I can help you. I didn't find out that you're not satisfied because you didn't even ask me a question.
And that's a great point. That's what, that's what a lot of, that's the problem of libraries in general is that you don't. You don't know how to answer the questions that are never being asked, you know?
That's only for people who are coming in and that's right. I know we always see those stats or.
Campaign, ask me buttons, you know, please ask me.
There is a thing on the catalog though, that you can, i- if you can't find it, it prompts you to search through mail.
Yep.
So it is.
Yeah.
That's what I couldn't figure out how to do.
I personally find that.
I was told there was a way.
But I couldn't get there from our chat.
I would say, thanks. This might be a good area, uh, that Sarah could help us with, with some, um, just like demos. A demo video. Cause, um, whoever was in here when we first rolled out the app and you can check out your books on the app. Well, if you all had seen me downstairs in the main lobby with my stack of books and my phone, trying to do it. Then I was like, okay, I can't do it. Then I was over at the self-checkout and the people at the circulation desk are looking at me like. But at the end of that, bottom line is that like a little demonstration video of like what was supposed to go down. Probably would have helped inform me a little bit. I did figure it out, but it took me a little bit.
You're a techie guy.
I thought I wasn't. All right. And I also understand that technology is new too. So like sensing this, you know what I mean? So all of that. I factor all of that into it, but I really was kind of just like feeling all the book. I'm like, what am I doing? Uh, so I think that can help. Yeah, a lot of new stuff.
Okay, just second comment. This shouldn't that take that long?
Three minutes.
You mentioned that you had just visited the Westland Library.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and I recently visited several libraries and, um, and seeing things that, you know, were kind of very interesting or, you know, worth. But maybe it, it would be through the facilities committee, if we put one together, that we could kind of gather those shared, those experiences. That we have as, I know staff visit other libraries, but they have as a patron. Visiting, uh, a different library, especially those that are doing renovations or adding either indoor spaces or outdoor spaces. So, um, quite a few libraries in our area are upgrading, um, and making changes. So. Uh, I, I just wanted to comment on that and I didn't know we were gonna have the discussion of a facilities committee. Cause my question was gonna be, where does that, where could that information get funneled? But that could be something the facilities committee helps support me.
I like that. Again, best practices and ideation. Um, and I've got even former board members sending me pictures of things that we should have. So all that stuff could go there. So we could pull up and take a look at.
And don't forget, that's a great idea. And don't forget too, that M C D, that's one reason we went with them is because they are involved in, in other. Yeah.
All right, thank you, Chris. Any other trustee comment? Oh, yes, Kathy. Sorry. I forgot you were on cue there.
This is directed to Peter. I know that we talked about the, the placement in the sidewalks that need to get repaired.
So I actually reached out to a, a company, uh, earlier this week to have someone come out and, uh, look at our sidewalk. Cause we have here a lot of kind of cracks and divots, especially at the branch too. The receiving dock is pretty bad. Um, I'm just kind of waiting on them to be able to come out. It's, you know, their busy season, they're doing their projects. So I just need them to actually come up.
Okay, and I'm a commissioner on the Farming and Health Boot of Patient Commission. So I, I look everywhere. I just said, need work on it. And I'm just looking around our, our lands and there are so many weeds. That I just can't believe it. So, and it's kind of embarrassing. So what are we gonna do?
Oh, we're working on that too, because I noticed that, uh, this week, there's a ton of weeds out in the front, especially if you go further back in the parking lot. Um, so, uh, my team is working on clearing out the, those weeds. We're trying to do it in a way where we don't have to use harmful chemicals. I'm looking to find, uh. Non-harmful chemicals essentially. And then if it gets really bad, I, I was thinking also, maybe we could do a one-time. Uh. Uh, work with our landscaping company, have them just come clear it out, maybe once a season. And then we kind of maintain it in between, uh, those times.
Well, I think what I've seen them do before is they just scrape it off. They just scrape whatever's there off, you know? Deep digging and.
Yeah, I would have to work with them to make sure they're not just, you know, pulling the weeds and that's it. Uh, a lot of times you have to, when the new season comes in, you have to take out like the old mulch. Put down like this layer of netting and then you put the new stuff in. Um, previous years, I was, it was noted that we had multiple landscaping companies. So I don't know where the weeding, which company felt that fell under. This year we're going with one company to do everything from summer to winter, all that stuff. Uh, so I will, I'm, I'm working with them for little lawn issues for sprinklers over by our, the new, uh. Raised beds. So I'll work with them also to do, fix our weeding problem.
I have, I have noticed when they go and do the mulch, which they usually do in the latter part of the summer. Which kind of is, you know, not, that's kind of, why wouldn't you do it in the spring kind of thing? Um, that they don't take the old mulch. They just. Which is not good for the trees.
Right.
So, just saying.
Okay.
That's something I'm worrying, uh, since we're only doing one, uh, I'm essentially taking the problems that we see this year and saying, hey, let's fix it for this year. Or if they don't work out, then we switch to the, another company that we were using and tell them, hey, these are the problems. We want you guys to do better, essentially.
Cool. I think the weeds are really bad this year because we've had so much rain. They are, it's just worse than normal. I've always heard that if you. I remember the name of the vinegar. I would have to send that in an email. There is a vinegar. Can't remember the name of it. It's a thirty percent. And you mix it with, um, salt on dish. Well, not salt because salt will kill the ground. Well, that and Dawn too. Mix it with that. I pour that on my cracks all the time. Yeah.
I know Ace has a, uh, a weed killer that's called vinegar. And it's mostly that. It's a pre-mix solution. You don't have to really do anything to it, but it's also a grass killer. So we'd have to make sure we're not using it in. The areas where we want grass. Yeah. Which might work out for those like islands in, um. The, the parking lot and the cracks, yeah.
Appreciate the comment, yeah, everyone. So, okay, appreciate the comment. Hello, Jim. Well, yes, sorry.
I was at West Bloomfield today because I will returning books that we don't have here, but we don't need it here. It wasn't very good. No, but, um, so, but, uh. I forget, are they, we were talking on the Millet, I mean, is there another library that's going for their military renewal in August?
Rochester, that's it.
Rochester, okay. Okay. So it's not West Bloomfield. That's interesting because.
I don't know what's moving. I know.
Okay, it might have been Bloomfield country. Anyway. West Bloomfield had a collection of yard signs and, and so this would just be an idea if you guys, um, Sarah. That maybe you talked about, but, um, it's a collection of yard signs and people could just go pick one up if they want it. And, and it says. Uh, excited about, something like excited about the library. So it's a generic. It's not a, uh, it's not a vote yet sign or anything like that. Um, but it's a sign that any patron could pick up and put in their own yard and it just promotes, it's a, it promotes a library, which I thought was.
Talked about it. Those signs are just really.
Well, that's what I, I, I figured, yeah, it's not a brand new idea. I was trying to say that.
No, we, we have, we have, we have talked about it on several occasions.
Yeah, okay. Um, I, at first, when I saw the sign, I thought they were promoting, uh, a Millet campaign and I thought, wow, you can't do that on library. But then I realized it wasn't that. It was just, I'm excited about the library. Um, and I thought that was kind of cool.
Yeah, I agree. And hopefully we'll have resources for something like that, but. All right. Well, um, thank you everyone for the comment. I think this was the most trustee comment we probably ever had. But all of it very, uh, salient and to the point and, um, I'm much appreciated. All right. Is there any other business to come with this body? No? All right. Consider ourselves adjourned.